This isn't church.
You're not in the very back row.
And we're left.
What was going on at the school last night? Language class?
Yeah.
Looked like a pretty big group there.
Yeah.
Can't Carmen teach you at home?
Language.
With your way?
Yep.
No, no.
She can't bring homework home and practice.
It's good to draw lines, so maybe.
Remember when Jordan was learning Spanish and Jamie would throw out a word and then she'd say it in Spanish and Jamie would say, "No, that's wrong." She had no idea if it was wrong or not, she just kept saying, "No, it's wrong." After about 45 minutes of that in the car, I pulled over and I'm like, "That's enough."
Interesting. My daughters', granddaughters go to a school in Duluth where Jibwe is one of the languages they can speak in school.
Cool.
That's cool.
Low. Yeah.
It is hard.
My girls took it for six years up here and said it takes like nine, 10 years till they can speak fluent.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a very diff-- I tried it and it didn't get too far.
Good morning.
It's hard work.
I will call the Cook County Board of Commissioners a regular meeting to order on Tuesday, December 3rd, where our mission is supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we aren't going to make any adjustments other than if anybody has anything.
Make a motion to, yeah, make a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Uh-huh.
Anyone?
Okay, folks, we'll, we'll pass on to just another little piece that I picked out of Speak Your Piece. Last week, we started talking about some of the high points of that, choosing a word, and today I'd like to choose another word. And I think the best way to determine what a community wants is to listen, so that's our word today, is to listen to what the people say, and I think we all try to do a really good job of that. When we sit here, obviously, we listen, we take notes, and we repeat back what we hope people are saying. And this is a fundamental principle of the democracy by listening. Disagreements actually can lead to healthy discussions and debate, which then can bring on new ideas, information, and bring things to light that maybe we hadn't thought of before. So our word "listen" is to focus on others in order to better understand their points of view. And that's our Speak Your Piece word for today.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
There is one.
Yeah, there is. It's like, I can't believe.
Just the claims. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. A second? Did somebody second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Right now, we're going to ask Mike Keport to come up to present a, a big folio of words.
A folio of words. I'll try. As you all probably know, the, every county in the state is required to have an emergency operations plan. The emergency operations plan is on a four-year cycle. This is the first year of the cycle, and during the first year, what we do is we ask the county to re-review and approve the plan. In the, in the second year, we have a, it's called a peer review. In Cook County's case, usually Lake County and Cook County, just I go down and look at Lake County, VJ comes up and looks at ours, just to make sure we're all on the same page. On the third year, we have a peer team. We have a team of emergency managers throughout our region that come and look at the Cook County plan and just see if they see anything that's missing or needs to be updated. And in the fourth year, emergency management, homeland security from the state comes up and looks at the plan to make sure it's in, it's in, it's in good shape. That's the big gist of it. The biggest change that the plans have taken in the last years, I want to say four years ago, our region, which our region is comprised of 11 counties, five tribes, and the city of Duluth, we decided as a region that we would like to format our emergency plans so they all are very similar. So if I went down to Lake County or St. Louis County to help them, I could pick up their plan and know where to look for things and invite someone else to come and help me. That's the biggest thing that it's taken on, not, not to say, not to say as times change and goofy people and terrorists and cyber attacks happen, that, that things can be added to this in the future.
Is that a technical term, goofy people?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. So that's it, in a nutshell.
Did you find many changes in the four years?
No, not, not, not huge changes, no. We also, the Minwok document that I included is also a guide. It's more of a planning guide, and that does pinpoint different individual subjects like communication and who's, who's responsible for the plan, which is me and my staff.
Me, myself, and I.
Well, it looks like a great review and a lot of things are covered, especially since I represent townships, you know, their role in all this too, so it's, for my take on it, it's very comprehensive, and we won't be looking at any changes for another four years. Okay, is that right? Okay. Questions or comments?
I have a question. So, as far as the, the four-year timeline goes, are all the counties on the same timeline?
No, they kind of rotate.
Okay.
They rotate around. We do it regionally, so the, so the 11 counties and the five tribes, I take that back, the tribes are, are not, they can participate or not, but the city of Duluth and the 11 counties, and it's on a rotating system, so we're, we're not all on the same page, if you will.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for all you do. I've been here just a short period of time. This is a lot of work that you got done in that time, but thanks for all you do and good work, and I've read through it, and, and we do need to monitor and adjust, and
Sure.
So thanks again for joining us, Mike.
Appreciate that.
Part of a good management plan. That's in order. Anybody else, comments? Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency management plan.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
First item I have for you today is actually a culmination of a discussion that's been going on over quite some time with regards to the placement and of the implementation administration of the Aquatic Invasive Species Plan. As you may know, a few years ago, or some years ago, the board created the AIS, or Aquatic Invasive Species Task Force, and generated a full comprehensive plan for the county and delegated the implementation of plan to that task force. Had a lot of assistance from the Soil and Water in, in the development and implementation of that plan, and then contracted with Amanda Wieberg to serve as the coordinator. Over the years, we, we basically had shifted a little bit in trying to find where the best placement for that, the overall management or administration and implementation of that plan would be. We had created the Land Commissioner, Parks and Trails, and AIS position there and with Lisa, and we had done the fiscal management for that over the last couple of years on that. And so there has been, like I said, discussion between this board and other committees in the Soil and Water Conservation Board District in terms of where it would be best placed, and the determination was that the Soil and Water Board said that if the county requested the SWCD to go ahead and implement and administer that plan, that they would go ahead and do so. And so this has been kind of a series of back and forth between this board and that board. And so right, what I have before you today is a resolution. Basically, they did accept at the, at their last meeting, the, indicate that they would go ahead and accept the program. So this is a resolution, basically delegating the authority and responsibility of implementing the Aquatic Invasive Species Plan to the Soil and Water Conservation District Board. Currently, what we've had, as indicated, a contract with Amanda as a coordinator. As the, in doing so, in delegating this program over to the Soil and Water, we basically had had to cancel that contract as, from the county standpoint that we have with Amanda, and then it's, it will be up to the Soil and Water Conservation District to go ahead and have those conversations with Amanda or whoever determine the best way in which to handle that program. And also included in this is the requested dissolutionment of the task force that was created because this, basically, this resolution would put the authority of the implementation and administration of the program fully with the SWCD. So I guess at that point, I'll just turn it back.
Thank you on that, and thank you to SWDC for working on all this and putting all this together. So questions or comments about this? You've done a fine job, Commissioner Mills.
Are there any, are there any concerns regarding this transition? There's always unknowns with transitions, so is there anything, you know, we're keeping an eye on just to see how it jives or doesn't?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, if you look around the, the state, there's a really wide variety of where this program is placed in, in terms of management. SWCDs make up a large number of, of counties that, that handle it. In some places, it's done with the sheriff's office. In some places, it's done with environmental services. So there's a, there is a wide variety of where it is. I think the, the concerns would be the staffing, the, kind of the, the space available and management of it. I think the SWCD is, is very well capable. They've demonstrated that they, it's their business. I mean, they, they certainly are capable, have a very capable staff. I think the biggest concern really is with, with spacing, the amount of staffing, and how, how best to structure the management in terms of hiring and/or contracting and how to get that figured out. But I guess the Soil and Water would be best equipped to, to answer that question.
Thank you, yeah. It seems, it seems like a no-brainer. It makes a lot of sense, but when you see something like that, it's just good to
Yeah.
look for things that I don't see.
Well, in, in, in all of these programs, as we go on, we, we do kind of continually monitor where things are, are best placed and occurred to me. We just don't lob something into somewhere and then just forget all about it. I think, you know, the Soil and Water would definitely be able to come back to this board and, if there were any types of issues or anything. The, the one really good thing about this program is that it is funded by the state, and right now, it's, it's sitting in pretty good shape as far, it's already kind of developed. Amanda's done a good job in terms of getting the coordination taken care of, so a lot of this is already in place, and so it's, I think we're up to just a matter of tweaking and getting it structured under the SWCD in a, a full confidence and a...
Great.
Commissioner Bershon?
Makes a lot of sense. It's more of an alignment, I think, than, than a merger. It makes more sense there. Got one question, more on the technical, financial side of things. These are contract workers in invasive species, and if they go to Soil and Water, do Soil and Water people get county benefits? And then would these people get county benefits as well? So I'm just leading, is it cost neutral, or is there going to be a cost? And I'm not being judgmental about that. I'm just curious.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bershon, that's, that's a really good question, and that's a lot of the discussion that Soil and Water are going to have to have. Soil and Water, I don't believe, or actually consider county employees. They are their own entity, that their, their pay structure and everything's kind of managed through our county, and maybe Brady can better answer that one, but I, I think part of this was, was maybe to kind of answer that question with regards to the contract, because we've had Amanda under contract to perform those services, and then we've had temporary employees that did work for the county, and so we wanted to really kind of get that streamlined out. That was kind of part of the question that we wanted to have answered or streamlined. So I think that, again, is an ongoing question for the Soil and Water Board.
The only person that's contracted is Amanda. The temporary inspectors are on the county payroll, and they're temporary, so they do not qualify for benefits, and so they will continue to go through the county payroll under Soil and Water, as does the Soil and Water staff. And the Soil and Water Board will have discussions about those number of employees and contracts and everything else that will be going forward. Obviously, we're in the early stages. I must say that Tim's office and Elena's office and the Soil and Water Board have spent many months having conversations about this and how it will transition and how it will move, and how everyone will be treated fairly, and whether or not that office can take on the added responsibility. So I think that this will be very smooth. Amanda's been very well involved in these conversations, and so it is going to be a good program moving forward.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Brady, do you know if they are, Soil and Water, do they receive benefits if they're hit so many hours?
I just answered that.
Yeah.
They are? Okay. So the one that would, okay, it'd be just a consideration.
They were full, full-time, but these are temporary.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought I answered that.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Well, I'm on a roll here. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution, finalizing transition.
I support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay, thank you.
She's shaking her head behind you. Totally agreeing with you.
The whole time. I'm quite sure.
Rabbit ears or anything.
The next item is actually a report that Amanda had put together. She puts together an annual report of the AIS activities, and she had anticipated being here to be able to present that report to you. I don't know if you want to wait. She is running later. I do understand that she is still intending to come this morning.
I haven't confirmed. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay, but yeah, the last I heard that she was intending to come in to, to go ahead and be able to present to you, so we could put her later on the list or, or whatever.
As long as she's on her way, you know, we'll let her, we'll fit her in.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elena, thank you for taking on AIS. I'm sure we'll be talking about it on Thursday.
Okay, next we have Attorney Hickon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm embarrassed because I see that the report that I submitted has an incomplete sentence printed right there on the agenda, but what I have for, what I have for the board today is just a request that you make a motion to approve execution of the Prosecutor by Carpel contract. This is a contract with an entity called Carpel Solutions. If you recall, back in August, Rena and I presented to the board the case to buy this new case management system for the county attorney's office. It was previously approved by the board in the initial budget as a capital purchase. The terms of the agreement, which I emailed to the board this morning, are consistent with the proposal, consistent with what we submitted to the board in August, and I've obviously reviewed it and made any changes that I think are necessary to protect the county. I am waiting to hear back from the Carpel representative on two of my changes. So what I would ask today is that the board approve execution of the agreement substantially in the form that I submitted today, allowing some discretion to the county attorney to make minor changes, since we're still kind of in negotiation.
Okay. Questions or comments?
What kind of changes are you anticipating?
I, I don't have anything specific that I'm anticipating. That's why I need the discretion to make that decision on my own. It would not be financial, so it's not going to affect the cost of this contract, but I've requested that they make changes to the, well, I've actually added requirements as far as insurance and indemnification clauses, so that's a kind of thing that I'm accustomed to negotiating with companies, and I'm not sure the board would wish to be involved in that. But I can tell you, if there's any change, significant change to the cost, I'll come back to the board and I won't ask, yeah, I won't ask the chair to sign it without further board approval.
Commissioner Mills?
I was just looking under the client responsibilities.
Yes.
And that's all fine and good, and client validation data, is that?
So are you referring to general client responsibilities on?
Number four, page five, yep.
Okay. So...
And then 4.1 is the, the client validation. Didn't know if we had, what kind of a process that is and...
I'm not sure I'm looking at the same page as you. Paragraph four.
Page, page five, 4.1, client validation. Or maybe, is it, is my Word document different? No, both say five on there.
I don't have a list, client validation. I wonder if you're in general conditions, and I'm in the first part. Hold on.
Okay. There's number three, other information. Number four, general client responsibilities. 4.1, client validation. Client is responsible for validating their data during the project?
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know what that means, if we're, you know, if we're staff for that and all that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mills, it just basically means they, that, that Molly's office, the Commissioner, or Commissioner, Attorney Hickon's office needs to make sure that the data that they put in or the way they set it up matches their, matches their business needs, that they're the ones that say, that check off on that. Yep, that's set up the way we want it to be set up. That's the way we want to organize our data. That's all that means. They have the final say on it.
Yes.
And that's your office's responsibility, though?
Yes.
I didn't know if that was going to be IT responsibility.
No, this is really the attorney's business, and so they're, they're the ones that will be the expert on their business processes and their business information.
Commissioner Mills, thank you for that question, and now I've, I done, I was looking at the same page, just not low enough on...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I think what this is referring to is, is that we are required to input accurate data into the system so that it works correctly and that the output is correct. So whether it's offender information or charge information or whatever we put in the probable cause statement, that kind of technical information, we're responsible for making sure it's accurate. And you bring up a good point, because other technical requirements or responsibilities of the client or the county in this contract have been reviewed by Ms. Rogers, and she, I think she believes her department can fulfill the pieces that they need to, so I'm comfortable with the form of agreement.
So I understand that better. It's sort of a liability issue that, that the company that we're contracting with is not held responsible for any data.
Or errors that, that we might make in setting that data up.
I guess the reason I was curious about that is just from the Kronos HR versus payroll thing, where it's just like, well, wait, that's not how that was set up, and so I just wanted to make sure we were looking at that type of issue.
No, it's a, that's a kind of an apples and oranges issue.
Okay, you're right.
When we had previous, a previous discussion about this, we discussed that this would help with staffing needs. Is that still really prevalent in, in this, or is it just part of the mix, or?
That...
I guess I'm interested in using technology, and its cost would be somewhat offset if we didn't have that by staffing needs.
So what I anticipate, and this was part of my case to make this expense, or for the county to spend this money, what I anticipate is that any deficiencies in our staffing will be reduced by the efficiencies that this program brings to our office. So, you know, I do anticipate maybe 10 years down the line or earlier, we'll need to add staff at some point, but what I also anticipate is that having an efficient case management system is going to delay, you know, that requirement.
Okay. Affirmative, yes, thank you.
And could you please remind us about the, the transition? Was it the case you were going to be running two different ones, and then just eventually one phases out and all the new ones go into Carpel? Are you migrating, or?
So we are not asking that they convert all of the data from the old system into the new system. There's kind of a separate but related project going on, because a lot of the northeastern Minnesota counties have, are switching to this program. So Carlton County, I think, has purchased like a bunch of data or paid the cost for conversion. And at some point, if we decide we want that data, we would come back to the board and ask to spend that money, but we've made the calculation that the value of the data from the older system is not great enough at this point compared to the expense that they were quoting us...
To bring it in.
To bring it in. And mostly that expense was on the other side from Damian and Constellation.
Okay.
The old program, not from Prosecutor by Carpel. So we will be running two systems, at least until the go-live date, which is late April for Prosecutor by Carpel. I mean, actually, we're not going to be running that system until the go-live. We're going to keep Damian running and use that case management system until the day we can begin to rely on the new program.
And then you'll only have to access Damian as needed, kind of, or you're not, you're not anticipating much hopefully at all. It's mainly moving forward with Carpel, right?
Right. We are, we are keeping a license for the, for 2019 for two users to, for kind of read-only access of Damian, so that we can go in there, see stuff. If we need to pull it out, we can then kind of transpose it into the new system.
Great. Really like the names, Damian and Prosecutor.
Solable.
Yeah.
Damian was part of Nemesis.
Right.
Comes up with this stuff.
Geniuses.
Any other questions or comments? Ready for a motion?
I move that we go forward this program.
Contract with the Carpel.
Contingent on changes that the county attorney may make to find, excuse me. Contingent on changes that the county attorney may make to find, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
And Amanda has arrived.
Good morning, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. Thank you for adjusting your schedule to accommodate my tardiness. So I just wanted to present the 2019 summary for the aquatic invasive species plan, and I have the PDF here, and it's all attached in your packet. So I'll just go through. The first page is just the snapshot summary of the statistics. So we spent just over $100,000 of our $200,000 grant. So we have half of that, that's gonna go into the reserves for future years. And the grant doesn't say that you have to spend it all, so it can go every year, and you can just keep it in the future. There was one part-time staff working on AIS, and then I had, for three months, I had a deputy inspector, or deputy coordinator that was helping out, and then she left to do another position. And there were five Level One watercraft inspectors working this season out at the boat landings. $20,000 were spent on the staff wages, and 18 volunteers were doing AIS work, and those are lake association members mainly, and some resort owners that are really passionate about keeping their lakes clean. And over 70 hours of volunteer people were served during that time. And we partnered with the 12 lake associations, and that are members of the Cook County Cola Lake Association. Many businesses that have an investment in keeping the lakes clean, mostly along the Gunflint Trail and along Lake Superior, that have, they can have handouts that I give them so that they show their resort guests how to clean their gear when they're out, and they have the Clean Your Johnson poster up in their bathrooms and around in their cooler area, so people are just more aware of clean, drain, dry. The local governments, Forest Service, DNR, county. We had an AIS task force for the last five years, and the $5,000 grant that was distributed to the sheriff office to help with overtime inspections at Devil Track and Rec Park Landing. We had 10 events for outreach during the festivals in town, so at Fisherman's Picnic and the Beaver House Fest, for example, and the Arts Festival. And over 1,000 people were, we keep tallied every time we have a conversation with someone, over 1,000 people were contacted, and the conversations have been really great over the last few years. They've been changing more where the awareness is there, so they're more in-depth conversations where they actually want to know what do spiny waterfleas look like? What do zebra mussels look like? How did they get here? And they have all heard of clean, drain, dry. So it's been a very positive outreach experience this year. And we had six in-school presentations about invasive species, and 125 children were taught. We went to all the schools except for Birch Grove, because they didn't have the schedule in there in May. So this was in May. We went and went to, first and third grade students were visited, and they played a musical chair game, or like a tag game, to do the differences in ecosystems, and to learn the impacts of invasive species when a crayfish comes in that's not native, and how that impacts the plants and then the larger fish. And they had a great time. I think they had a great time. Over 1,000 inspections were formed, 1,042 inspections, with 1,972 hours of inspections being done. 22 accesses in the county were covered, and that's prioritized by how many landing spaces are there, and how many people frequent to that area. So over the last four years, I've just been seeing who comes to these landings most often. I've had people at Poplar for a while, or at Greenwood, but then no one really travels to that landing, so it's not worth it. So then we shift and have more people at Rec Park and Devil Track, which are the lakes that have the invasive species. So that's how I was prioritizing where they go, how many hours are there. 98% of the people that came into the landing had their boat plugs out, and the other 2% are usually out of state, people that haven't heard of. You need to have your boat plugs out on arrival. And that's just, when they pull the plug, if there's no water, it comes out, it's just a reminder, like this is why you need to pull your plug out, but no further action is taken if their boat plug is in. And Caribou Lake has 36 boaters that are ambassador volunteer trained. So there's 36 people on Caribou Lake that are helping with watercraft inspections at Caribou. There were five law enforcement officers that were trained this year with the conservation officer from the DNR to do aquatic invasive species inspections, and six of them were doing law enforcement work at the landings. So they did, from July 4th through Labor Day, they were doing Rec Park and Caribou, sorry, and Devil Track Lake. And 110 boaters were contacted by law enforcement this year. 12 lakes and rivers were surveyed with the 12 lake associations that are helping out with monitoring. And there's three volunteers that are working with the University of Minnesota AIS Research Center as an AIS detector. So if a report comes out that there's Eurasian milfoil at a lake, then an AIS detector can go and verify if it's a false alarm, or if it is true, because the DNR only has three staff in the state that can do that. We don't have to have someone come all the way from Grand Rapids just to verify a true or a false ID. That's the summary. And then page two has, the beginning is just the little chart of the expenses. So the majority of the program is spent on watercraft inspections. That's the, the way that the public is learning how to clean, drain, dry, and how to prevent the spread of invasive species. And the next bigger chunk is advertising, the billboards, the gas station pump toppers, the posters, the articles in the paper, and then outreach and admin. A great success story from this year is, the inspectors had little jars of spiny waterfleas so they can actually see what spiny waterfleas look like. And they don't hatch, and they're not abundant in the water until the end of the summer, August and September, when the water temperatures are warmer. But the inspectors were showing people the whole season, this is what spiny waterfleas look like. And then once they, on Devil Track and Lake Superior, once the spiny waterfleas were abundant enough to detect, people were finding them again. They were like, this is what they look like, I haven't seen them before. And so then they knew what to look for and how to remove them, and they were really thankful to the inspectors to be able to have that information, that they, they've heard of them, but having that visual was really helpful. And the next section is the inspection results from the last four years. The first chart, you can see the number of hours and total inspections. Everything's going right on track. There's, had slightly less hours than last year, but we still had a lot of inspections, the 1,042, so that's about a half, like one inspection every two hours, which is not great, but we have a lot of landings, and that interaction is really beneficial. It has that, that one-on-one contact to really have the impact to change someone's social behavior. 78% of the surveys were motor boats, and 22% were canoe, and I am focusing more on motorboat accesses and not the boundary water entry points, because canoes aren't as likely to spread invasive species. But they do have all that information at the resorts, and the outfitters, and where they get their boundary water permits. 87% of the people surveyed had spoken with an inspector within the last month. The people are gaining contact, and they're learning. 16% of the surveys were out of state, and 34%, the boat had been out of the water for at least five days. And then we have our top 10 landings, which have been Devil Track, Rec Park, and Caribou have been the top three for the last four years. That's the inspection survey, pretty much. And the last page just has some pictures to show you some of the fun work that we're doing. There's the Clean Your Johnson poster, which has gotten nothing but great reviews and comment. It's something that you remember, and, oh yeah, I have to clean my Johnson when you're out on the landing. Pull your plug, wipe the weeds off. And there were, we distributed 5,000 bait bags to the bait shops in town, and they just say, wait, don't dump your bait, because that's another part of AIS prevention that people aren't quite as aware of, is you can't just dump your minnows in the water. You can save, if you need to save the bait, you have to bring water from home in a tap And then there is the decontamination pressure washer that was gifted to Rockwood Lodge and Outfitter. WTIP did a nice article and interview with Carl, who has been doing that, and they had, it was only nine people used that service on the Gunflint Trail this year, so we're gonna hopefully try to get that to be used more frequently in the future, but we're starting it out. And, and there's the picture of musical chairs at, I think that was at GES. And then Scott Brown is a fourth-year inspector, who's been doing this, and is very passionate and a great asset to the team. He did a WTIP interview also on the importance of inspections. That was 2019.
Wow, thank you. So when you see this summary, this didn't happen the first year. I was on the AIS committee, and over the last four years, each year it was like Amanda would say, okay, now we need, this is our focus, and we need to do this, and we just kept pushing, and we just kept working on it, and, you know, the state is supporting us, and obviously, we're the land of 10,000 lakes plus. And you pick up the Tribune or the Duluth paper, and you read about a lake that's gone under with stuff, and it's just, we can't have that happen up here. I mean, maybe in 100 years it might, but not right now. So everything you see here has been Amanda saying, how about let's look at this, and let's go out and meet the children, and let's put a billboard up in Schroeder, and let's do this, and let's do that. So it's, in four years, this is pretty phenomenal, what Amanda has done in the committee, and all I have to say is, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So hopefully, this will be taken into serious consideration in the future, where it's going, and it's, it's a good work in progress. Comments or questions to Amanda?
Well, thank you so much for all you do, and this is a very important part of our county, is clean water in our area, and we need to do everything we can to make sure that we preserve that, and combat invasive species as much as we can, in various means, not only with boats and canoes.
I have a couple of questions that are diving into details a little bit. What's a Level Two inspector versus a Level One?
Yes. Level Two is someone that's authorized to do a decon, and we don't have a decontamination unit, a DNR-certified decontamination station.
So versus the hot water pressure washer, it would be a whole, like, a much more.
Yeah, a really big unit that you have to have liability and a special training in order to operate it, which the ones, the car wash is just, it's the car wash, and then the high water, hot water, high-pressure unit is, is not certified as a DNR decontamination.
Need like a sealed door, and under pressure, and wow. And then, the, the top 10 landings, inspections per hour, would you, would you say that's kind of the top 10 use, too? The lakes are top 10 use? Yeah. It's really interesting to know, too. Well, yeah, I, I hear, just like Jenny said, we hear, I hear about lakes in other counties, other commissioners saying, oh man, we have huge problems, and they can't go back in time and do the prevention, you know, and now they're just trying to deal with it. So I'm really grateful and thankful that we have this program and your work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, do you know if the freshwater jellyfish, is that considered invasive? Have you run into those?
Holopodium species?
I'm not sure the species, that's just how I've heard it described. I've run into them. Didn't know if they were.
Are they in Minnesota?
I've run into them in Sag.
Okay.
Do they sting you?
I'm nodding her head.
Okay.
Yeah, do they, is that invasive, or is that natural?
If it's holopedium, they're native.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Did it stop your boat?
No.
Oh.
Swimming.
When you ran in, I was.
Swimming.
I could actually see them, white.
Oh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duke. There's a red metal sign at the Gunflint Lake Access. Is that a DNR sign that has the invasive species, or is that something AIS put up?
That is DNR.
Okay.
Well, I have one other question. Is there any possibility coordination with Grand Portage regarding?
They also have their own invasive species program through the tribes. They do everything themselves, and we do coordinate as much as we can.
Okay. I saw the three governmental, so then I led me to think, more than three, so.
Yeah.
Grade 12, oh.
Go ahead.
Shift the shot.
No.
Go ahead.
I recognize you.
Well, I think it's an important program there. Every month in the summer, you hear of a new lake up in St. Louis County or somewhere that they're finding zebra mussels on it, and different invasive species, and with Lake Superior warming up, I think we're gonna see a lot more out there, too. I mentioned earlier, this year, I went and bought a boat over in Wisconsin, Sturgeon Bay, Wisconsin, and when I picked it up, it was just completely covered with dry zebra mussels, and, and they're sharp, they cut my fingers, I was knocking them off, and I called Seb, the guy from Portage there, and asked him, you know, what to do with them, and make sure they were all cleaned off, and make sure they weren't gonna come back to life or something.
Zombie sea.
But, you know, it's just, you would look at all the boats over in Lake Michigan, and they're just covered with them things.
You should have put them in a jar for Amanda, so she could show them. I've got them.
I think I got some pictures. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. The recommendation then is to accept the summary report presented by Amanda.
Well, I'll move to accept the summary report.
Have a second? Support? Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Amanda, so much.
Thank you, commissioners.
We will now move to Brady and all of the resolutions that he wants us to hold on.
Madam Chair, the first item is just a motion. This, every year, we have to seek bids for qualified newspapers to publish legal notifications, and some legal reports. You can see examples on the next page, the bid form, financial statements, commissioner proceedings, delinquent tax lists, expiration of redemption notice, the county budget, other legal notices are all required. So we have to have a qualified newspaper, and in the bid, they'll give us their qualifications. So I'm suggesting that you approve a notice to be published this Saturday, and to see, to receive bids until December 26th at 2:00 PM, and then to accept one of them on December 7th at our organizational meeting.
Any questions?
January 7th.
Did I say December? January, sorry.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brady on that?
I do have a question. I've had constituents ask, what is a qualified newspaper? And, and, you know, what are the requirements are?
I don't have the details in front of me, but it's, it's covering the entire county. It's certain amount of advertising, only limited compared to news, have to cover our events. Molly has some more information on that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Mills, the two.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Mills, the two other requirements that I recall is that the business office for the newspaper needs to be within the boundaries of the county, that the newspaper has to already be regularly reporting on county business. And I just know that we, I can't, I can't remember the exact language, but it's my memory that it has to be kind of a traditional newsprint newspaper, as in not an online resource.
Yeah, that's something, that's something I had heard differently, but it's good for you to clarify that.
It's possible there have been changes made since I looked at it, which was probably six months.
It is, it is possible to be outside of the county.
Okay.
And with certain restrictions. I just, I didn't bring that. I don't recall the details. There is an option there, but they, again, as you said, they have to be covering us currently to a certain degree. They have to meet those standards. So we could someday get a bid from somewhere else, but you'd know because they'd be covering us already and you'd be seeing it in print.
Yeah, I guess a lot of the conversation I've had, not exclusively, but a lot of it was after we approved the, we accepted the bid last year. And there was discussion about that in the community. And since then, there's been some, I've had some conversations with constituents about different communities. Maybe they weren't exclusively in Minnesota either, but they don't have a newspaper, you know? And they, so there, it was just a really interesting conundrum there, but...
Yeah, I could bring it back and talk about it, but, you know, you may not have a written newspaper. I mean, that's gonna happen one of these days.
Right.
It hasn't in some places.
Exactly.
So there has to be options.
Yep, yep. So, just good to know what the requirements are and how we can look ahead to see if we're able to meet them.
I'll bring back some of that information at the next meeting, because we won't be approving anything until January, not December.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion to seek bids for our legally required publications.
I'll need a second.
Support.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, the second item is a resolution for designation of polling places. This is a requirement that we do this annually before the end of the year. We have no changes. The idea of this is to make sure that people know whether there are changes, but there are also new people moving in. So it states what you already know, precinct five, Grand Murray East, and the commissioner's room, precinct six, Grand Murray West, and the community center. All other precincts, the Cook County Auditor's Office is the, is the polling place, so...
Any questions on that?
I have questions all the time.
Yeah.
Is it, can you talk about the history of these locations and how long it's been this way? It seems like...
1994, since we went to mail ballots. Prior to that, you know, each of the towns had a precinct, the town halls, Colville, Hovland, the church from Maple Hill, you know, there, we had polling places everywhere. But after 94, then we went mail ballot where we were allowed to do it. So anybody that has less than 400 regular voters in unorganized territories and in towns can be mail ballot, so...
And I know there's significant cost with mailing ballots, but there's also significant cost with polling places. And there's excellent voter turnout with mailing ballots. So just interesting.
Yeah.
Navigating all that.
When I was first elected, there was a hard push to eliminate mail-in ballots. And the estimated cost for us to do that was that we would have to have polling places in specific areas to meet the populations, and they would have to be ADA accessible, which if you think about what we have available for facilities, we were looking at millions of dollars to make that available, plus the equipment, plus the volunteers and the people that we hire for the voting that have to be trained to process all the ballots. And so it was a very intense, heated conversation at the Association of Minnesota Counties. It was some of the southern counties that were pushing very hard to remove mail-in ballots.
Why?
They believed that there was fraud occurring.
Oh.
And so they were pushing pretty hard on that. It was, it went through the general policy committee and we actually had to take the vote three times because we couldn't come to a consensus. And honestly, if I hadn't been there, it would have passed.
Wow.
Yeah. It was pretty intense. I had six female commissioners corner me in a bathroom.
Was it a women's bathroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's how intense it was. That was how big the fight was. I mean, I was a new commissioner.
What, um, that was just AMC's position or what that would have...
No, that was the position coming from the committee. Because the general committees, the policy committees bring theirs forward and then the entire group votes on it. And then it's brought forward to legislators. So it was in the general policy committee as the starting point.
I think some of those concerns have been relayed by people that have, after every election, you have to verify the equipment. And of course, that doesn't, it doesn't relay all of the concerns regarding mail versus other, but it does versus the equipment during those reviews. And when we've had, because everything is reviewed, when we've had contests of election in that Senate campaign, I think it was 2008, everything was looked at there, including all your procedures for mail ballots and stuff. And the people that came and watched that got a very good sense of how much detail and work goes into safeguarding all aspects of that. I mean, I heard a lot of good comments from people that came in loaded for bear over how elections were conducted and they saw, and they were at least somewhat, their concerns were relayed.
Remember the hanging chat?
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution designating the polling places.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Next item is the general fund third quarter budget report.
I would just like to thank whoever put this packet together where it's facing the right way. Don't have to read it sideways.
April does that.
No, the online one was always sideways.
So, just to review again, we give you all of the departments that have activity in the general fund, but the operating departments, the ones that have budgets, are on the first page and then partway down the second page. And then the rest of them are there just to give you context, everything else that goes on. And in the general fund, those are mostly grants that have no match, so we don't budget for them, things like that, or cash balance accounts. But on that second page, about 12 lines down, you see adjusted for budgeted levy, that's the final numbers. And over to the right, revenues, expenditures, levy. The expenditures overall for the fund are at about, are at 76%, which is very close. It's 75% of the year. So that's positive. It's what you generally expect. The revenues are at 100%. And I'll review that a little bit. I'm gonna go back to the start and just cover what I see as some of the highlights. And then just any questions you have along the way, just stop me. So I'm going down to Department 41, General Finance Administration. You see a minus 122 way over on the right in the column. And that's the revenue. It just means that the revenue is higher than we budgeted. And that's primarily because of interest income. At 75% of the year, we're at 130% of the budgeted revenue, so that's a strong positive. It's just reflecting the economy and our investments are paying. Then I'm gonna skip down to the Sheriff's Department, 200. You see that at 83%. That's 75% of the year. Part of that is revenues. There's a large source of revenue that they get, actually, they got it in October, but this report is in September. That's their state amortization aid. It's $100,000 generally. On the expense side, the largest expense difference is the mileage. They're at about 90%, 8% of their mileage so far. So that's patrol and transport, et cetera. I don't have details on that. If you need details, we could ask the sheriff. But that's the largest part of the expense. Dropping down to 250, the county jail, I just think it's worth pointing out, that's only at 50%. That's Department 250. It's 51%. So the expenses, the biggest one is the professional contract services, and that's just housing people outside of the county. So that's, it's dropped significantly over previous years, at least to this point of the year, so... $41,000 through nine months, and we budgeted 150 based on previous experience, so... Dropping down to Department 390, Environmental Health. The biggest thing to note there is the revenue is only at 50%. And that's, Tim says that's timing. They get a lot of that for environmental services towards the end of the year. And then 393, two steps down, you've, you've heard this, this is the score recycling. Tim talked about that at the last meeting. It's that the recycling revenues have been substantially lower. We're not getting, you know, the plastics that China used to take, things like that. But we're processing, moving more materials than we did last year and in previous years. So the labor costs are up. They've used their temporaries more, which is why the hiring request. So the costs are there, but the revenues aren't. It's just the reality of that business. Dropping down to the community center, which is at, just wanted to note, the revenue's at 95%. So they're making great use of the kitchen right now. That's compared to what they've been budgeting and using in previous years. Expenses are right on, so...
Brady, can you go back up to 416?
Sure. It's Emergency Services Conference. The budget was 10,000 expense. We spent 12,000. So...
So if you just look at the percent of 249%, it looks rather shocking, but it's only $4,000.
That may be, there may be a math issue there, or a cell issue, because it's not, it's not that. When you look at 10,000 versus 12,000.
Uh huh. That's what I was worried about.
That's about 20, that's more in the range of 20%. So that's probably...
24%, isn't it?
Yeah, that's about a...
22.
And that's done for the year, so it should be at 100%. And it, the expenses are at 124, which is correct, but there's something going on with the revenue side of that. It's been showing up as an expense instead of a revenue, so, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll fix that. And down to the YMCA, next, 536. And the expenditures there are 95% of the year, at 75% of the actual year. And it's really down the line, the personnel services are at 115%. So that's cleaning and maintenance. And utilities are really just slightly high this year, so 78% at 75% of the year. But professional contract is at 104, repairs and maintenance, 125. Insurance is paid for the year, that was right on. And the other supplies, small equipment, 100% at 75% of the year. And then the capital purchases, we made that decision to purchase the exercise equipment, so we did that at the beginning of the year. So it's just the reality of what's happening there. The last item is the miscellaneous, Department 822. That's, the revenues are, have exceeded the budget, and that's because we received additional payment in lieu of taxes again this year. So the previous year, we had gotten, we expect about 235,000 or so from the 6902 payment in lieu of taxes, and we received over 700,000, 761. But we didn't know precisely which program, so we couldn't use it. We didn't know who to divide the money up if we needed to. So same situation. They said that was a one-time, but it turned out we got another large payment this year. It's actually a little bit higher, about 17,000 higher than the previous one. But again, we don't know if it's secure rural schools or if it's more of the 6902 that we just distribute a small amount to the towns and we're allowed to keep the rest of it. So when we, I assume we'll find out the same way. We'll find out what happens with secure rural schools through the rest of this year and early next year. And by deduction, we'll decide what this is again. And then I would expect we'll use it next year to offset levy, particularly if we don't get relief on the Boundary Waters appraisal decision, so...
When did, when did that, when did that come to...
That comes in, it was either late June or July.
So that's not a part of our...
Yeah. No, even, even if we'd known about it earlier, we don't know precisely what it is, so...
Yep, just like...
I'm just reluctant to, I don't wanna send money to the school and then ask for it back in six months or a year, so...
On, just with what happened with DHS and statewide, it just makes a person cautious with spending money.
We're glad, we got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But it's also frustrating not knowing how we can manage it.
You know how fast government moves.
So if you hear anything at any of your meetings again, especially regarding secure rural schools, so... And if there are any more questions, I would just ask that you make a motion to accept the report. And if there are any more questions, I would just ask that, uh, you make a motion to accept the report.
I guess, um, so we're on the budget because that's the only one that you're talking about is, what is your thought on our next meeting? We have to set the levy. And, uh, what are your suggestions in terms of, do we call the budget meeting together again? Or how do you think we should proceed so we know at our final meeting?
Well, first, we, I mean, the elephant in the room is, what are they gonna tell us regarding the Boundary Waters? And so there's, there's two tracks. If, you know, if that was fully restored or largely restored in some fashion, um, it would be a much easier decision as to what to do regarding the levy itself, um, yeah.
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday in our governmental meeting, uh, and we got an update. And I was planning on doing it at the end, and Commissioner DeShram was there too. And so if he wants to add anything. But could do that now or wait till the end of the meeting for Commissioner comments?
I would prefer to stay to the agenda at this time.
I agree.
And if, you know, if we don't hear anything positive, uh, then there's a, the tough decision as to whether to leave it at six point zero five or to make cuts. Presumably, you'd be looking hard at the things that we added to make it six point zero five, which was to start that, uh, funding, the building funding. Um, it's, it's the easiest, uh, change to make. Um, and whether you want the committee, like, the, a budget committee involved in that decision or not, I guess I'd, I would, uh, defer that to you, but...
Okay. So for now, we need to vote on the recommendation.
All right. I had a question about, um, page four, AUA Deed Housing, twenty sixteen. It's highlighted. Um, why is it highlighted?
Uh, I, I am not sure.
No.
Uh, Kelly highlighted that as she did the report. And, uh, maybe she's ho... I think she's probably highlighting it, asking me whether we should remove it since it's, uh, it's passed. And I don't think it needs to be on here, so I think I just made that decision, so.
Motion to approve third quarter budget.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Take a five-minute break, is that okay? Make a motion and take a five-minute break?
Free to.
You can get a second.
I second.
Did you go directly back or did you head for town?
No, I came.
I was thinking about it and then...
How, how was it down in Duluth? How was it down in Duluth? Were the roads still bad?
Oh, it was a mess.
Yeah, it was. And then I, I had to go. I was gonna look at, they got this place where we had a handgun in order. I turned off the security. Turned into the place. They delivered the security and they had bring them over. Well, I'm excited. Paperwork, that was a mistake. Cause I had to get that area.
Well, it was over there before the meeting, that's why I was leaving. I was just right down the street over at Thunder Sports.
Oh.
I think Pilt thing is just, everybody's waiting.
Yeah, I did, I did call in yesterday after my other meeting, listened for a while. Conversation built.
For, for a while, okay.
Listen, well, I was doing some other stuff, but...
Well, we're pretty fortunate that Rich is right on top of that.
Yeah. I think, uh, he's really, first he said gonna be our president of the AMC. He's really done a lot of work on this. And I think he's a really, uh, good asset to have in northeast Minnesota. And to be, uh, on the good side of, you know, so. I really, I worked with him a lot on a couple of committees. It's just, boy, he's really quite remarkably, uh, he's been around a long time. He's been board chair forever.
Yeah.
Highly respected. Yeah, I think, uh, I'm very torn on it.
I, you know, some of it's hard to hear over the phone. There was at one point when people were saying, Frank, get close to your microphone.
Oh, that was at the beginning, yeah.
No, it was...
Oh, was it? Oh, okay.
I guess I was listening when people getting updates from the counties or something.
Ah, I'm glad you listened to it.
Tried to listen in for a while.
Well, a lot of, a lot of good things can come out of that organization. I know, uh, Forest Service wants to work with Cook County. So we're, I have a conversation with Connie, we're gonna get together, so if she comes up, uh...
We have, through the work we did at Siegel Tower and, um, some other stuff. I think at least my department has a new working relationship with the local district branch.
We've been working on the historicals. Probably, I think we're actually gonna come someplace with the...
You know, I, I think it's very, very nice leadership.
Yeah, and you know, we had some earlier discussions about, you know, you gotta get the people from the area more involved in their decision-making. Of course, now they're forced to do it more participatory because they, they don't have the money to be a big bureaucracy anymore, which, you know, uh, they're trying to de-bureaucrize. And they're training the leaders to be...
Sunny out, yay. That's beautiful.
Have you checked with Bob? There's no update on Pilt yet?
Yes. I know.
Flew by.
Yeah. I didn't go in his space, in his bubble.
He has been able to communicate a little bit. It's...
Oh, is he here?
Nope. He's here today?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, well, quarantine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it's been twenty-four hours. Beth was under the impression that the AMC conference was Wednesday, Thursday, Fri... Or, yeah, one, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, no. I can see why she's confused since our agenda has the wrong dates.
Really?
Yep.
Not the bottom?
We can't get it right, how can the phone?
How is that? How was that wrong?
It's the eighth. We have a meeting on the eighth.
Oh, on the Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
So Brady, you have one more item here?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's the setting of twenty-twenty County Commissioner Compensation. If there are any changes to Commissioner Compensation, that's either salary or per diems. It has to occur before the start of the next year in order to take effect then, so. And the state auditors, uh, recommend that we make a motion, um, you know, whether we leave it or change it. Either way, it's good to have it in the record, so.
Um, I think, you know, we, we haven't talked about changing this for our budget. Um, but I do think we need to have a conversation about changing this. Um, by having it at this level, it really restricts who is able to serve as a county commissioner. I mean, what kind of demographic are we looking for? Are we looking for as widespread as we can? Or are we looking for just a niche of the population? And, I mean, I have my own beliefs on what we should look for, but I think this is a conversation we need to have, I guess, next year at this point. Um, and then factor that into the, into the budget as well. Um, I was gonna do some math, but I'll do that and let you.
Commissioner DuKirk?
We have this discussion, a small discussion, when this comes up for approval every year. And the discussion is pretty restricted because of the opinion of the community and, and what we say and how we decide it. There was an attempt last year to change it, was not taken very well by the public, was not supported by the entire board. Um, and it was asked when it was, when the discussion happened last year, that the Budget Committee take this up. And it was recommended to the Budget Committee that the commissioners be set on the same schedule as the staff. So the staff have their union negotiations, which give them a certain COLA every year. And then that is usually what is also recommended for the department heads because they don't have union representation. And they often fall with what those contracts come in line with. And so the discussions have been that it would be fair to put the commissioners at the same level as department heads in their compensation package.
As far as increases?
Mm-hmm, annual increases.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was asked that the Budget Committee take that into consideration during their discussions this year. And obviously, I'm not on that committee, so I don't know that any of that was ever taken into consideration.
And I'm, I'm assuming that the Pilt issue just kinda took over a lot, but...
There's always an issue. I mean, we had a seventeen percent levy. There is always...
Yeah.
An issue, but we still respect our staff and we still give them their income. And so it just, because we're elected and we're in a different field or whatever it is, it's taken in a different way. The twenty-two thousand salary has been set since the nineties. The only thing that has changed is just before I was elected, the per diem went from seventy-five to a hundred. So that was eight years ago.
Yeah, I think it was either two thousand or two thousand two, the salaries, uh, went up from like fourteen or fifteen to twenty-two.
And I asked for the vice chair to have a five hundred dollar annual increase last year, which passed.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that's it.
Could, I'm sorry, could you say that last part again, Brady? It went from what to what?
I have to look back, but I think it was in the range fourteen thousand to fifteen thousand. And it went to twenty-two, three, sixty-four, I think, for commissioners. Another fifteen hundred for the chair and a thousand for the vice chair. So that's what happens. If you, if you wait, then you take a big jump eventually because you see where everybody else is. And then they finally, they took that jump to get close to where the rest of the, uh, small, medium counties were.
Yeah, I, I suspect if we, if we dive... I'm, I'm sorry, did, did the Budget Committee get into it much as far as? Okay.
I don't think it ever did.
I suspect, I suspect when we do get into it, um, that there's gonna be another big jump, um, similar to an adjustment that we had. It, if things aren't kept with, if there isn't an annual increase, then after twenty years, it's gonna be pretty big. Talking to other counties, um, there's a lot of different compensations out there. Um, some are awful and only wealthy business owners can afford to be a commissioner. Um, others are, are higher, uh, but their per diems are lower. And so I suspect once we kinda start digging into this, I'm sure we can do some kind of comparison.
EMC has an annual report.
Exactly, yeah.
And we've looked at it, and we're in the lower of the eighty-seven counties on that report. I haven't seen the one for this year. But, you know, we have an election coming up in twenty-twenty. And you're right, it does affect the pool of candidates because for most people in our community, they're unable to quit their current job in order to do this. And it's not just wealthy business owners. I mean, I'm not a wealthy business owner, and I took a huge hit in income, and I have lost business. And I can't continue to take on all the committees and support my staff. And so I'm losing money to be a commissioner because this job is important. And so I'm willing to take that sacrifice because of how much I love this community. But I don't know that everybody has the ability to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that we were wealthy business owners. It's just in other counties, they have a, they have a, I think it's like thirteen thousand dollars. How can, and it's a, it's a...
They don't have as many committees as we do.
Well, this, the commissioner, I was...
For every county.
No, this, yeah. And it, I mean, there's all kinds all over. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm in a similar boat, um, and, uh, but I, I think it's important. And, um, but I, I think about my peers and friends and who else could do this job? And what other, whatever, I mean, you have to be self-employed or retired, basically. Well, I guess, Bobby, you've got some good flexibility, understanding employer.
Well, I'm not the only one that holds a job. You know, Regutermont holds a job at the mine. The other Lake County, uh, commissioner is the chief of police. You know, this shouldn't be for people that are retired. It should be for the people that are, uh, working.
Yep, yep. Or Bowles, or, yeah, yeah. That's, that's kinda where I'm thinking of, though. Anybody, everybody.
They have less committee work than we do.
Do they? I mean, is that? That's all that? Yeah, so. So, yeah.
I think we had a discussion just yesterday that, uh, and I think you referenced this, Commissioner DuKirk, that AMC is currently conducting a, a survey for this year. And, um, I don't think, was anyone able to access anything on that? I haven't been able to. I don't think it's completed.
No.
Um, so, but, uh, I would agree with what you're saying. You know, I think this is something that, I personally am, you know, pretty neutral about it, but I really care about, we attract people. And it shouldn't just be for retirees, and it shouldn't just be for people that can afford to do it or want to do it enough. I think all of us, no matter what, we do make a lot of sacrifices because we, we care about our county and, uh, and so forth. So, you know, um, but I think there's, it sends a message, you know? Are we worth the same? Are we, you know, let's say it was two thousand two. You know, the inflation's gone up a lot. So I speak from a policy point of view that typically, you know, you have to sort of, when you think something's important, you have to sort of have a system that, uh, not honors that or rewards it, but recognizes it. So, but, um, that's my thoughts. But I'm, I really appreciate what, uh, those of you that are younger and have jobs, uh, do or have businesses. And, uh, I think I would look to you people for providing us some guidance on this. Rather than myself, but I think it's good policy.
But we asked the Budget Committee to review it.
Do we need to... Is that, is that the best, is that the best path forward? Is for the Budget Committee to take that on, or?
It was my assumption that that's what they were doing when they were meeting this year. And I apologize that I didn't ask up to this point because every year it comes back and we don't have these open discussions here. So I apologize. I just assumed that when the board asked the Budget Committee to review it, that it had been taken under consideration and no changes were recommended. I put my faith in that committee.
I think there were a lot of things in that committee that we had discussed, and it did not come to the top, unfortunately. There were other issues and concerns, so do we wanna leave it as it is right now? Get the AMC report for twenty-nineteen and then, um, ask the Budget Committee to put that at the top of their list?
Commissioner DuKirk?
EMC does a report every year. And they need to get, so that you can get an eighteen report. AMC does a report every year, and they need to get, so that you can get an 18 report. You know, it's going to come in after the final wages are submitted.
Sure.
So that information has been available every year.
Every year, right. But for now.
I mean, there's an election coming up next year. If we leave it as is, that sets the stage for what candidates will get.
And can we, can we actually leave this until next?
Yep, we can leave it until 17.
Meeting? Yeah, because I think we can get a lot of information real quick, just not right now. And, and I don't, I don't know if, I mean, it might be a bit much to ask the Budget Committee to look at before the
I don't know if we're going to meet.
Yeah, right.
You know, there was some, it was brought up earlier on, and
Yeah.
and I still think that, you know, we, as a board, need to set this.
Yeah.
And I think that if we feel strongly we should do it, that it's good to have the input of the Budget Advisory Committee, but that could have been negative as well.
Sure.
And so I think we still have to make that decision. And so I agree with you that maybe we should discuss it at our next meeting, and think more about it, and see if we get some data, and look at the 18 data, if that's all that's available.
Motion to table to December 17.
Support.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll come back with a strong opinion.
Okay.
Today's wasn't strong?
I haven't voted yet. I'm wondering who did the second. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A poll is the same sign. December 17, we'll put it on the agenda.
I just made a note.
Thank you. Thank you, Brady.
Yeah, you can forget that. Bobby phoned Hennepin County, it said 110,000.
Oh.
Does that include the staff?
They have their own secretaries.
Yeah, right.
And their own offices. I think Ramsey County's at 125. That will not be our choice.
That would not be our choice.
Was it, was it an order by amount, or you just searched that one?
No, he just pulled up.
Oh.
Okay. On to administrator updates?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioners, just have a couple of quick updates this morning. First one is about the administrator or the executive search. And as you, I think you all know, our next steps are the DDA, the consultant we've just, we decided to work with, will be up December 16, and being doing, and they will be conducting individual commissioner interviews, and also will be meeting with the math team to gather information that they'll use for creating a position description and other advertising materials. So that, just, that's on the calendar. I think you're all scheduled, so we're good with that. Really quickly, the three capital projects that we've been tracking are, you know, it's kind of like bringing a big plane in for a landing now. We're kind of doing the best we can to get all the ducks in a row. The warming house, just a, I did a walkthrough with Diane last week and the contractors, and there's a, just a small amount of electrical work still needs to be done. The heat's working now. All of the construction elements are done. They are planning to have an open house for the community on December 20. There'll be more advertising on that. I think her board is going to be providing food, and there'll be free ice skating for people. So it'll be a good opportunity for people to come and check that, that out. The, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It should be open on the 20th. I have that slightly backwards. It'll be open on the 20th, and on the 29th, there will be an open house. That's the tentative date. Then the Hovland Garage, the final walkthrough, and it got scheduled while we've been sitting here, is this Friday. And so we'll walk through and do a final punch list. That's, there's still work going on this week with the, with the heating and plumbing HVAC stuff there. But right now, it looks like that's a go for this week. So we're hoping that that can be, they can begin moving into that facility later this month. And then the windows replacement, as far as I know, is still scheduled for, to begin the end of this, the end of this month. So things are kind of moving toward conclusion, and I know it's a, it's a good thing to, actually, in every case, it's kind of hard when they're this late into, into the construction season and into the winter, but we're going to do our best to make them, get them done. So, any questions about any of those?
Okay.
That's what I got.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to concerns and commissioner concerns, because in January, we, January, the first meeting in January is when we organize our board meetings and all our committees and everything like that. In the past, it's been kind of disorganized in who's going to be chair, who's going to be vice chair. And so I'm just throwing this out. You can think about it. We can talk about it next meeting. But I'm wondering if there would be more like a succession of the vice chair moves into the chair, and a new vice chair comes on board. It might be a smoother transition. It might mean, it might mean that nobody wants it. So I think perhaps what could happen is the administrator would ask all of us, who wants to be? And then if somebody definitely feels like they need to be a chair, we can entertain that. But I think a transition from vice to chair and a new vice might be a little more smoother. So I'm just throwing that out for concerns, questions, comments, on how you think about that. I know David's only come on the board in January, when everything was kind of already set. So I'm just throwing out a new idea. Commissioner DuKirk?
I had the fun of coming into a January meeting one year where we had no chair or vice chair due to elections. So that may work. It just depends on planning in ahead so that it doesn't fall into an election year, because there's the possibility that the vice chair doesn't get reelected, and then that transition wouldn't happen. Also, what has happened predominantly with this board is that the commissioners didn't want someone to be the chair, so they gave them the vice chair position, because they wanted to keep them out of the chair position. I'm not saying that that is the opinion of the current board, because we have new members. It's, you know, what we had done in the past, not saying that that's fair or a correct way to do things. For me, the role of the chair is not a popularity contest. It is very important, and it should be someone who is trusted and respected by everyone else on this board. It is someone who has the board and the county's best interest as highest importance. Someone who will listen to all and bring the people together, bring the commissioners together, and bring the community together. No other agency understands our role. And if someone is in the position of the chair and sends a letter to another group, committee, organization, or state or federal agency, those agencies assume that that person is sending information that is the thoughts of the entire board, which sometimes that happens, and sometimes other people's opinions are not brought into the discussion. So for me, it's a huge trust issue and a respect issue.
Were you able to get anything from Ryan? Okay. One of the things I talked with Rena
about yesterday was just reaching out to AMC and seeing how other counties do it, what their process is, and I can do that as well. I was also thinking it'd be useful to talk about exactly the roles and responsibilities of chair, vice chair, and that can really, I think, aid the discussion. And I guess Commissioner DuKirk touched on that a little bit. I'm leery of the succession side of things. All of my votes are very intentional. And so, just a succession, that doesn't seem quite as intentional. A lot can happen in a year. And, and there's a lot of dynamics going on in our community. And so I don't like the idea of just kind of setting something in motion. And I guess I've talked a little bit about this, about, I'm not a big fan of just the straight-up rotation either. And I, and I recognize that people can opt out of that, but I don't like it out of principle, the rotation, because different people have different strengths. And, and I think when there's a really strong chair, that that person can stay as chair for, until, until uh
They say no?
Look at Lake County. They've had the same chair for six years.
Yeah, and until they say no, or until there's some issue that comes up. It's just, I just think it's, I like neither the, the, the regular rotation nor the succession. But that really doesn't leave much structure to the process. So, so that's why I was hoping to flesh that out a little bit more with roles and responsibilities, and then just AMC's perspective, so.
Commissioner DuKirk?
I think some of the confusion in selecting the chair is that when we come in, there's confusion about motion and second, or nomination. So that's been some of the confusion on which process we're using to elect. The roles and responsibilities, if you look at our list of committees, Ginny and Myron have several committees that they must be on and represent as the chair and vice chair. They're also the person that's called on in an emergency. And so that plan that we just approved today, these two should know that inside and out to be able to respond to certain situations. They need to be available by phone. I know when I was chair, Brady had to sometimes call me in to sign contracts that needed to be done on a deadline. So it requires some flexibility in time, the ability to check and read your email frequently, and to respond frequently.
Yep, those all seem like they, yeah.
So I brought it up. Let's think about it. We're going to AMC. We'll talk to other folks. We can look up some of the descriptions of the chair and the vice chair more, and put it on the agenda for 17.
Great.
I was, I'd really like to hear from Myron if he has some thoughts too, or Bobby too. I mean.
That's all right with Madam Chair. No, I, you know, I've been vice chair for a couple of years, and I had some reasons to withdraw last year. But, you know, there's really pros and cons, and quite frankly, I'm open. You know, I think it's good to have a dialogue and talk about it. And, you know, you do learn some things as vice chair that maybe others wouldn't, because of the meetings and so forth. But it doesn't set up a person to be more qualified, I don't think. But it is a transition. So there's some, you know, pros and cons for anything, and benefits. But I think also, we realize there's extenuating circumstances, and so it's, it's not a matter of, you know, being a succession, or someone should do it. It's always going to be a part of the board process every year. And I think as far as our, you know, I think you brought up a good point with how we conduct our meetings. I think we need to address our, you know, our bylaws again, and build in that, and, and that would be helpful, I think, so that we all are on the same page as far as the expectations. And we really haven't had that in a way that is more formalized, that we can all agree to, and try to keep our, you know, help each other to do so. But that's all I was going to say, Dave. But, you know, I think you, it's, it's, it's one of those things where there's pros and cons with anything. And I just hope that we try to stay out of personalities and the politics of things, that we try to be, you know, what's best for the county, if that's possible. And we are politicians, so, you know, so it's going to be politics. But, so I'm pretty neutral on it.
Commissioner Shaw?
I thought last year, we talked about doing the rotation thing.
We've brought it up a couple of times. Last year, Myron sent us a message and said he wasn't able to fill the role of chair and vice chair. And then during our organizational meeting, he said that he had some changes in his schedule. David helped out with scheduling so he could cover it. So he was the only one of us that volunteered to be the vice chair. He may be the only one that volunteered to be chair. We've had that. We had one year where we said, who wants to be chair? And only Ginny raised her hand. So we've had all sorts of ways we've done it. And thank you for stepping up and taking the vice chair when no one else wanted it.
Okay, so we will look into it a little bit further forward this week, for the 17th. Okay, so moving on to commissioner reports.
Well, I'll start with, and Bobby, please interject or make your comments on this. I'm only speaking from my recollection and interpretation of the Thiblotnick situation. So, and I think I just found out too, that Rena, you listened in on this as well. So I would welcome comments from other people and further clarification. We've all been waiting for the Thiblotnick thing. It's a significant issue with our budget, as everyone knows. And just for the public, that those that are listening, it's about $750,000 a year for us in revenue, and it's about seven and a half million over 10 years that we could be having less revenue, which really has serious implications for our budgeting process over a long period of time. The latest update as of yesterday morning, Rich Sve, we're very fortunate to have him at this meeting, and this meeting is the Intergovernmental Committee. We meet quarterly, and it represents United States Forest Service personnel, DNR, and then commissioners, as well as those from tribal lands from the three counties northeastern Minnesota. And so it's St. Louis, Lake, and Cook. And we have discussed many issues on these, you know, on our discussions at these quarterly meetings that deal with land use especially, and intergovernmental kind of relationships. So this was a big one, and I just want to clarify that we shouldn't hold any accountability, or, we should hold harmless in this whole process, United States Forest Service. And I know there's some past history, but they really are not the decision makers on this one. It is the Department of Agriculture, as well as the legislative process that would be involved. So, you know, we had a meeting last summer with the Deputy Secretary of, his name is Sensky, I can't remember his first name. He is actually from Minnesota, and he met with us on this issue. And we had an opportunity to spend some time with him about our concerns. So he has been the lead contact in this so far. And as of earlier last week, our representative, Staber, met with Deputy Secretary Sensky, and they talked about some issues. So our representative is very involved in this, and they talked about another factor that he may look at, or maybe will be an argument for us to actually even get more money in the future, is, it's right now, in the past, it was either the land value as far as real estate, lakeshore, especially resorts. This year, the appraised value was based upon timber value, and that dropped us down, and that was the difference in it. So the three counties got together and hired another appraisal company to do a rebuttal, and they worked with our local county assessor, as well as those from other counties. And they provided their rationale. What I'm alluding to here is that Rep. Stark, Representative Staber, also brought up the mineral value, and that has not been part of the discussion. And this came up in N Club. I'm a representative on that. That's a Northern County Land Use Conservation Board. We meet monthly, and we'll be meeting again on Thursday, so maybe we'll know a little bit better. All of this is coming together, and Deputy Secretary's supposed to make a recommendation to the, to the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture. And hopefully, that person has the responsibility and the authority to make this decision, and whether they look at mineral leases or not. But that was done in 1997, and that was a million dollars for us, value, 100 million, excuse me. But whether that happens or not. There's been talk about legislation, that's not going to happen. There's been talk about legislation that's not going to happen for a while. So the latest news, what I'm getting to is that determination, according to Rich Svei, who's really been on top of this, and I am grateful and hope all of us are, and I think we are knowing that his leadership has just been critical on this thing. He's put a lot of time on it. Being president-elect of, uh, Association of Minnesota Counties gives him, uh, you know, a lot more, um, attention and willingness, uh, on the part of the agencies to listen, uh, to his leadership. So we're hoping to find out within the next couple of weeks. It was supposed to be November 28th and, um, uh, that hasn't happened. He's somewhat, um, hopeful that that will happen. And of course, it'll be a day-by-day basis. We're meeting again, maybe on Thursday, might get an update. And, uh, I could send something out. If anything changes, I would send it to, uh, to Ms. Rogers and she could send out some information on that, um, if there's something pertinent there. Also, uh, Rich Svei mentioned, uh, you know, I asked a question of him, how are you dealing with this in Lake County? And so I, I would just like to share that and I'll close, that, um, they have set their preliminary levy at 6%. And they feel that if it wasn't for the Thiblotnick cut for them, which is more, it's more for them than us. It's 1.2 million. That's a lot more of their levy. And, um, they would, uh, they thought they could get by in a 2.5%. So that's their, their sort of spread. I said, "Well, if we don't hear, where are you going to go?" And he said, "Well, at least he would, you know, look at the 6%." So, but we'll have more updates on that. So anything else on that?
Um, also at the meeting, we did talk pretty lengthly about the B2B trail. And, um, I think everybody kind of came out of there. There's a lot more, we need a lot more answers still on it before we make a decision on it or jump to conclusion on it. And then there was, um, talk about the Lutzen Ski-Hill permit that Ski-Hill hired someone to do a NEPA forum. And, um, I just stated my opinion on it, so.
Thank you. So, uh, any other questions to me or?
Commissioner DuKirk?
So after the border-to-border meeting on Wednesday, it's going to go back to the Highway Public Safety's next meeting?
The 16th.
For the border-to-border? And then Soil and Water also wanted to be part of a conversation. So just for you two on that committee, if you could work with Kristen and the committee to set up, because you're right, we do need more information for us as commissioners and some input from Soil and Water on their opinions on it. So if we could get those meetings set up, that would be really great.
Leave that meeting till the 23rd, Myron.
23rd, thank you.
Of December?
I didn't follow up on that.
Um, so to summarize, Myron, is there, no, no change. We're still waiting. There has been more talk, maybe consideration of minerals and, uh, and it's possible we can know more before our next meeting, so we can set the levy, or, I mean, it's, it doesn't sound, I, I'm not, at this point, I'm not holding my breath, I guess.
I wouldn't.
Honestly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's wishful thinking that we'll get something, but we don't have any kind of assurance. Um, that is Rich Svei's, you know, sort of hope, hopeful thinking, uh, that it's possible. But, um...
Yeah.
Here again, um, you know, remains to be seen.
So he'll see Rich on Thursday and I'll see him on Friday. So we'll try to...
Good, we got him.
We'll try to ask him every day that we see him and then we'll see him on Monday.
I'm missing Sunday, yeah.
I'll do it Monday.
No.
Sorry, Rich.
At the district meeting, I had a chance to talk with him a little bit and, and Commissioner Gudemont. And that was a really good conversation and just where they're thinking is at and really trying, I mean, trying their best to be respectful but, uh, pointed. And, uh, yeah, I am very thankful for, for their work on that and, and your work too, being a part of that conversation. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, we're, on a national level, we're just, you know, and we're, we're just nobody, you know? I mean, I mean, there's so many big issues going on. So, but this advocacy is so important and, um, you know, it's really good that our Representative Staber's on board and has really gotten involved. So, uh, that is going to be helpful, um, as well. So there's, you know, Rich did say there's, there's, you know, there's some indicators here to be somewhat optimistic. The legislation just will not take place over, you know, quickly or it'll take time. And the, the arguments for doing that would be to level this thing off so that if you set, set something, at some point in time, you build in a cost of living factor. It sort of goes to, you know, that's just a good policy to go that route and, um, so that, you know, people can budget. And then for us, if that doesn't happen, you know, we, we maybe have to revisit how we do some long-term forecasting on some of these revenue issues that are subject to change. And I know in education, we had a lot of those things going on where we had to start putting some money away because the rainy day kind of issue with, uh, lack of, uh, being able to count on future funding just because you get it now. I'll stop there.
Okay. More to be revealed. Any other commissioner reports? Um, yesterday I was, um, part of a first AMC, um, Human Service Policy Committee Conference Call. And this was, was put together by Emily Babcock. And I won't go into all the details because we will have details next week. But, um, she just gave us some ideas about what we're going to talk about at AMC. Um, there's, um, there's probably, um, 12 different areas that we're going to talk about, including, of course, the, um, the whole, um, resolution from AMC in, in terms of tobacco. And I did say where we were with the tobacco resolution for Cook County. I didn't know if the city had passed anything. Okay. So right now, we're still with the county. Anyway, um, we got on the phone, um, over an hour and a half, people called in from this committee from all over Minnesota. So that was kind of neat to be able to do that. So that brings me to bring up to the board, um, some thoughts that I have about NACO that I've been involved in and for Commissioner Mill and Commissioner, uh, Dushaw. When I first came on board, Jan Severson was part of the Health Committee with AMC. And then, um, I became part of that committee. And, um, from AMC, you move on to NACO, which is the National Association. When I checked into who was the last person who had attended a NACO, it had been like 10 years. And so I said, "Well, I think, you know, every once in a while, we need to be at the table." And so they have two meetings. They have one in the summer and then they have the legislative one in Washington DC. So I went to the summer one in Ohio and at that time opioids was the huge issue. And now it's vaping and, you know, all of that tobacco stuff. Um, so I checked into, to refresh my memory, what, um, what the board, um, or what I was looking at for out-of-state travel policy. And so we have one from the Minnesota statute 471.661, which directs us in terms of how we go out of state. And, uh, so it's been two years since I've been to NACO in the legislative session, which is in Washington DC and it actually starts the day that we end AMC legislature. So, um, I've looked into, you know, the policy and applies to elected officials and how you go about doing that. And, um, and then the requirements for going there. And I received my support letter from NACO and I brought that to the Health and Human Services. And part of the requirement is that you attend a legislative conference. They don't say every year, but they like it to be every year. And then you participate in the monthly call-in, which I did, um, in November again. Sometimes the call-ins are on days that I'm already doing something else. But I try to, if I'm in the car, pull over and at least participate as much as I can. Okay. So, um, what I'm putting forth now is I think it's time to go out to Washington DC and attend the legislative session, which is about six days. Um, starting from, for me, it would have to be the 28th, um, but I don't miss a whole lot on the 27th. So what I'm saying is I think it's time to reestablish Cook County at the NACO headquarters and to participate in all of the Health Committee meetings, which I would be doing, and then taking in other things too. Commissioner DuKirk?
So I've got a couple of questions. One, did we budget for that?
We increased our budget a couple of years ago when we first did it. So we've maintained that. We, I think like cost of living, we increased a couple of items for 2020, but the basis is there.
Yep. And then the second thing we did is that we said it would be either the chair or the vice chair that filled that role. So I don't know if we need to wait till January for the election of chair and vice chair or if we just vote that because you've been our representation to this point that you would continue that. That's up for the board to decide.
Right. Well, two things factored in, then the fact that, um, registration is already open. If you wait until the 12th of December, that money goes up and then your reservation for the hotel. So I would say, I would like action now.
I'm open to making action today. I'm just letting people that are new...
Right.
Know what we decided.
Right. Any questions or comments, any further?
Is it appropriate to make a motion now? I move that we cover the expenses for Commissioners, sorry to go to the conference.
I'll second it.
Okay. Questions or comments, any further?
I would just like to thank you for filling that role. It takes a lot out of your schedule. You're gone for a week, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I would love to do something like that, but it's just, there's just no way. So thank you for being able to do that.
Well, you do other things though that you can do too.
I do things.
Yeah, you do things.
You did the marijuana committee.
Yes, the marijuana, that's important. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. And I will report at the end, of course, which I do. Okay. Any other meetings to update? Meetings to note? So, um, let's see, we have, um, hmm, okay.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry if, if I, it just sometimes takes me a while to process things.
I'll give you a while.
Backtracking to, to the commissioner reports, I was just trying to, I just want to keep everyone up to speed that, um, we have selected a new director for, um, Nemo Jet. And, um, and so that's, that's exciting. Um, we are, we accepted the resignation of the director for the Community Health Board. And so we'll be, you know, starting that process, look at he split here. It sounds like the hope is to have a new director there by March. Um, so there's a little bit of, or Louise's official resignation, I believe, is January 17th. So there's going to be a little bit of a gap there. The library director, um, position is, is open and, and the city, that's a city position. But, um, I'm going to try to be as involved as I can be with that, um, sitting on the library board. Although I'm not on the Library Personnel Committee, I just feel like it's important for someone from the county to, to represent there, especially having gone through the Nemo Jet process and now the CHB, I just see, and our administrator, um, position. I just see the real importance of being involved in that. And then, um, oh, there was one other, but that'll do. That'll do. So I just want to, some big changes and, um...
What's taking the Community Health Board so long? Like when I was on the board over a year ago, we voted on this.
Uh, that was, uh, we were waiting on Lake County's decision on whether or not, because you, before you post the position, you got to know what the scope of this position is. So that's, and, yep. So sorry for backtracking there.
That's okay. We can go back and forth. Anything else on an update then? Okay. Um, Public Health and Human Services Advisory Council is today at 1:00. This Thursday at, um, 6:00 PM in the Commissioner Room is Truth in Taxation. And I would have to explain to you why I'm not going to be here. Um, because Taconite Harbor will have a group coming from Minnesota Power and other officials. At first I thought, "Well, it's okay. I'll get an update on it." Then I talked to Randy Lasky and he said they will have some comments and, um, future concerns with the county. And so I feel I need to be there to find out where are they going with that. So, um, the vice chair will take over on Thursday night at the taxation meeting. And of course, um, Sunday we leave for St. Cloud for AMC Annual Conference on the 9th through the 11th.
Ginny, it's actually the 8th.
For you?
No.
Oh.
There's, Bobby's also on the same committee. I am, there's committee meetings on the 8th.
On the 8th, okay. All right. So you'll be off early then. You'll be taken off there. Uh, regular board meeting, um, on the 17th at 8, let me see, no, wait, yeah, at 8:30. And then 10:30 will be the Public Health. I hope we'll be done by then, but if we're not, we'll have to just keep going. Because we're already carrying...
You're the chair, so you can manage that.
Because we're already carrying orders and things.
I have the utmost confidence in your ability to handle that.
Well, I'll, I'll discuss it with the administrator.
Back in the day, Ginny, back in the day, the public health staff used to sit there for hours and wait for us to finish.
No. We're, we're in the modern culture now. Anyway, I might work on that with, okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, we have some anniversaries.
We do. We have Ben Hallberg, 15 years at the Sheriff's Office in many, many different roles and responsibilities. Thank you, Ben. And thank you for filling the role of administrator as a deputy. It's very helpful for us right now. Julie Kinney in Public Health for the last six years. Diana Lindquist in our Land Services, formerly Planning and Zoning for the last six years. Allison McIntyre in our Public Health for seven years. Lindsay Milkie, 15 years at the Sheriff's Office. Charlie Sawyer, 11 years at the Highway Department. Lisa Sorley, 11 years at the Highway Department. And Lisa did tell me she was supposed to start before Charlie, but they're within a week of each other. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I will have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you all. Good stuff.